Good day, everybody. Welcome to this workshop for the Temple City Council. It's currently about ten minutes after free. First item is public comments. Any public comments online or that page you said? Anybody online?
There are no hints actually.
Very good. Next we'll move on to item two one, which is to discuss maybe needing any regular meeting agenda items. So Mike, I think I saw where you're standing.
Yeah, pretty good. Item seven. Mike panel.
Yes. Free eye and not good, but yeah.
All right. So the Bob White Road wouldn't free eye.
Just so, just so y'all know, I voted on that last time. Since then, I've been asking, turned in a proposal for the, for that contract rules, why I'm not next. See anything about what I did last time I was. I have not been involved here in cats.
And then item seven. All right, anything else or staff, do you have anything we need to pull or talk about for Mr. Tanner? I guess. Tanner, you're up.
All right, good afternoon, council. So I'd like to point out that we have a new zoning based template. So it's nine, ten years in making. So hopefully it's not another ten years before you see a new template. But this is thanks to one of our newest planners, Madison Neal. She's very creative and just took this on and has made our presentation much better. So excited to unveil the new design. But this one is a conditionally used permanent, that pocket place and charter of, this is actually for private auto store. So unlike a previous CEP kind of in this general area, which was for a club membership auto store. This one is actually just for one individual. It has a sort of a great court ledge.
Really?
So of course, here's the location and then the aerial map there, profit place, it's in the southwest corner of Charter Oak and Profit Place. And so that's, that was the subject property before they did some site work. So I'll show you what it looks like right now. But then just across the street there, other uses. So of course, site plan and the takeaways are that their access would come solely from Profit Place. Next time, actually disapproved a request for access on Charter Oak. And so that the site plan here shows some little through parking on that side that does not, this does not include driveway access to Charter Oak. They're adding a sidewalk, they get the proper number of parking spaces.
Where's that going?
The left side over there.
Yeah, yeah, through the building. So there's, there's a bag. Yeah, not sure exactly what they want to do with it. They apparently see a need for that. And but yes, there's, I think at least one bay over there. And yes, staff's recommending for a little P and Z the same. And then just a number of standard conditions related to sidewalks and parking spaces. For having any major vehicle servicing, but also getting minor vehicle servicing outside of the building. Just kind of standard auto storage conditions. Preventing nuisances, avoiding trespass noise, dust, all that good stuff. And the six foot sidewalk, and then of course, their landscape and bands and that. That's it.
Hey Brian, the other two car club things that we approved, it's been a while. There's one on Kegley.
Yes, and those are the same ones. So one, they decided that the first slide, yeah, did not work for them.
That is.
And then the one by the hospital.
FedEx building.
Yeah.
Right. I think it got damaged. I talked to those guys. I think it got damaged in the tornado.
That's right.
Yeah, they paused for a while and they decided to go somewhere else.
Got them. Got them. They'll, they'll, when you see them, see them. Now I guess that's some.
Uh, we'll have to look into that. We'll, we'll take a look. Not, not aware of does that. We'll, we'll, we'll check on him.
Mike says disregard, just kidding.
Oh, no, wasn't your buddy?
My, my buddy said he does good work.
Will be nice though.
Yeah, please get out. All right, anything else for Brian? Short and sweet.
All right.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Next is we'll receive Hartnell's update from people operation.
Hi.
Hello.
Great chance to meet all of you on hand, Bill. Director of People Operations Tara put me with us today. Her husband had a serious condition and she wishes she could be here, but she can't. Ran an appointment this afternoon. All right, but, but you know, with Tara, she didn't make sure that she'll have something beautiful for that. So the information that I'm presenting on, of course, this is our team. We did receive a new benefit specialist on our team in the fiscal year, so we'll get that concealed. And by the time we, we go next time, our work chart will be updated. So where we've been, this is going to be information related to the first three quarters of the fiscal year. Because that's the last time that she's been here. So we continue with those lead with purpose management trainings. We've conducted the civil service market study. We implemented the internship program. We launched the You Make the Difference program. Benefits of enrollment was completed. We've expanded the LMS, the citywide hiring event. We got that for the first time this year. And the employee engagement events that were completed during these, the first three quarters. And I'll talk more about that one a little bit later. Safety training that we conducted. I will show you more on those details. And then updated some safety program policies and procedures and the civil service exams, followed by other recruiting events. Now where we're going is listed up here. This is just some of the highlights. So it is time for us to kick off the general government market study. So that'll start in November. We're implementing the civil service market study details into the system, into day force now, based on what was approved in budget. With that comes us having to update, not just civil service job description, but any other of the things that were approved during the budget process. We're going to update job descriptions, make sure those position compensation forms are put in. And then make sure everything flows through, so everybody's in the right spot. Enhance the volunteer program. That's on our list to do this coming up time. We're going to continue to review the talent acquisition process and procedures. And that position is new, that actually reports under me. One of the things, just to give you some quick highlights of things that we've done, is she's a great sourcing person and purchasing was having trouble finding an HVAC person. And she was able to source someone from that, from T D L R who certified HVAC type of individuals. And she got, she encouraged a handful onto a buy and purchasing and facilities made a selection from that group. So we're going to keep working on that and enhancing that area. We will work to get a summer hiring event because obviously you know that's our biggest applicant flow time. We are updating building evacuations now. That's a very slow process. We're working with fire on that. We'll continue with the civil service testing. Engagement events that we have scheduled are listed there. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, didn't move over. So sorry. I should stand further over here. So these are the engagement events that we have coming up. And then we have dates to the marketing and we'll be dawling those out. Okay, so as promised, some more details on the employee engagement events. So believe it or not, we had this before, but this will be attendees for last year's Christmas parties, three hundred ninety-two, always moving up. And then this is the employee and volunteer appreciations. We had, I'd say, three attendees at this event. And then then bring your kids to work. This one's the best photo ever. Very interested in learning about that. But a hundred and ten attendees, and that's kids and employees. So that was a very successful event. And then this is that family fun night, you know, lots of people enjoying the water park. So we had two hundred eighty-seven attend that event. So then switching over to training and development. So we are doing the new manager training. We're doing those monthly. Last one, we had eighteen attendees, but we'll continue to do those. We had an internal curriculum for new managers, just kind of introducing to some of our internal processes. And then we had a leadership and one that we did in September, and we had twenty-nine attendees for those. This is our customer service training. That's something that we get requests for quite frequently. And these are the attendees that we've had attendee sessions so far. And then we have the training related to safety. So we try to get those on a regular basis. And these will be attendee numbers, but we do the, you know, craze, stop the bleed, hazardous communications, some hands-on CPR, that's a notion of fire as well, and then hazardous communications. So let's go over the KPI numbers that we report out. These are always the fun. So here's our applications by quarter. You know, our searches are as expected there. And then these are our numbers by positions. You can kind of see where we get our most of our applicant flow applied to. And then the source of the applicants consistently, indeed, city website, those are our top two. That hasn't changed since we've been doing day force. Those are our top sources for all of our applicants and how they're finding us. And then new hires, just to make sure that's the ones that we're hiring day two, you know, it goes along with that, indeed, city website. And then hires by month, this gives you an idea of how many we're hiring you see of course, summer, right? And then our October, when our new budget process, those times again, so those numbers are consistent. And so when you see it by department, what we did is we pulled it out to kind of show you public works and parks. But those are your big numbers. And then all the rest of the departments that might have had some openings at the time. Civil service stuff. So police exams, these are the numbers that we have. We do lateral ones as needed, as requested by the department. Those are people that are already might have a two full license or a white officer. So we do those that they had enough interest in it. We do the main entrance exam. The numbers have gone down as far as how frequently we do it. We were doing it monthly and then it got less. So we've got one coming up this month. So we'll have a big entrance exam. I looked at the, a number of people that registered this morning and we were about at a hundred thirteen that have registered to take the exam. But as you can see, the people that register, they drop the number that actually attend, then who actually pass. But anyways, that's the next one coming up for police. Fire, this is their information. We tested last time in November and that list is still good. When I last talked to fire, they're not looking to make any changes for testing. Maybe about March is what they're thinking based on the list. So that'll be coming up. Back to our new hires, we also report out on those that enroll in benefits. So these are the percentage of our new hires that enroll in benefits with the city. And then this is the number of people that attend new hire orientation. We always try to get everybody within sixty days. It all, it doesn't always happen. You know, we do it once a month. And so we try to get them, but if they have a schedule conflict, sometimes they roll into another quarter. But we do still contact and try to get them to orientation. So we like to be at a hundred percent and occasionally we get there, but we can't always get them all in at the same time.
You're saying?
Yes, absolutely.
What's the, what's the new hiring waiting period? Somebody's hired on, how long they have to wait?
For benefits?
For benefits.
Yeah, they have that sixty day waiting period.
First month, probably.
Yeah. All right. So then the day force task, so each new hires, and this includes our part-time. We have a bigger struggle with getting our part-time folks to do this, but these are different tasks. So they get the most important things done, you know, like their direct deposit, things like that. And but they don't always get all the different nuances of their different tasks. But we're working on improving that area as well. Positioning compensation forms. This is what puts everybody into their right positions, get their right salaries, do any of the changes. These are the number of items that are processed, not just through our office. Interesting, you know, also goes through I T, through payroll, and then through supervisors. So these are the number of items that we've processed, just to kind of give you an idea. Turnover percentages. Where the last time we ran the report, it was one point eight two.
Yep. One point eight two for the month or what?
For the month of June. Yeah, so, and then that, so it's based on the number of people that are leaving to the, so the one point eight two, you know, I, I'm not sure.
Some all of those months have a big.
The percentage. So I didn't know if they did it by the full, so by the quarter or by the full year. So I apologize if I didn't. But I'll get back to you on that. So we'll see that in the January, it seems like most people last time they're doing the most exciting time. And then when we get to that May and June, I do know that that's when our summer kids start to phase out. So this next slide will kind of give you more specifics to the area of where those are coming from. And so then the percentages then are related to those particular departments and areas. Prior reasons, we do send out to everybody who left. So we had two hundred four total that left October through June. You know, we had twenty-one people respond. And from those responses, that's what we did receive. So twenty-four percent said pay, twenty-one percent said personal, followed by retirement. So and then the rest of the items there.
Are there any follow-ups done on those? So if you got someone that like at the very bottom there dissatisfied with management? Or lack of advancement or pay? I mean, is there any follow-up to any of that or they just fill out the survey and that's that?
We do try to follow up with them. Sometimes they won't engage, especially when they're dissatisfied, dissatisfied with management. I've had some of those before, you know, what was the specific situation? Because I would follow up on that for the most part.
Right.
And they, and I would say something like, and then why didn't you come with people operations to kind of let us know so we can help you do that process? And some of them, well, the ones that have talked to me just said, I just was done.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the unfortunate part. So I told them, well, we have a process and a reason. But yeah, so the dissatisfied, satisfied with management, that would be something I would do. And then the pay, we occasionally follow up with those.
Okay. Do we ever do any employee satisfaction survey?
No, so we do not currently have that in process.
I can help you with the turnover.
Yeah.
You take the number of employees that terminate, separated year to the month by the number of employees at the beginning of the month. So our employee base is what, most of a thousand employees?
Yeah.
So that percentage, a very low citywide turnover rate. But if we did it by department, we might see some departments that would show.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused by that. I'm like you, Chris. You, some all those months that don't influence the high turnover rate, there are, we'll talk about two hundred and some odd. In a nine month period separating, that makes me believe. He's a two oh four. At least maybe believe it's better than probably twenty, twenty-five percent or so.
I don't know. Maybe you can all work out.
Actually, that was all that I had to present on. Would you, would you have any more? No, go ahead.
We're good.
No, just once we've got any questions besides the turnover.
Ballpark, total number of employees on staff.
So that's what Tracy and I were just talking about. We're just around, you know, we scale between that nine hundred and that thousand being on our summer. So I did pull that before I left.
So summer hires, I mean, I know lifeguards and things like that, maybe extra parts would make that.
And then zone, we have our summer camps that we staff for. Those are a lot of right features that we have. Those are several of those. Now, some of those will move from summer camps to are then zone programs that are at our schools. But we do ramp up for summer camps.
But kind of that intentional part-time hiring piece. Roughly how many is that? Would be just ballpark.
So I usually see us bring in about a thousands and, I'm, I'm sorry, a hundred, just over a hundred lifeguards and the rest of you, everything else. Because I worked with, with Clarice on, I'm more familiar with the lifeguards.
Sure.
And so everything else, the recs, the right leaders, I don't know how many transitioned from the zone program into the summer program. So I don't have that exact number.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know if it was that many lifeguards.
Yes.
I thought we'd not have that. Okay, very good. Council we think for Ms. Fennell?
She needs to water the flowers.
I know, Brian.
They're looking. Look like they do in my house.
Oh, they're Halloween, the witch killed them.
It's me, I'm a witch. Definitely be my house.
I have a question on the, 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 back when you showed the, recruiting applications. The highest, top four positions by absence emissions.
Yes.
Business data, something's four hundred and forty-seven.
Right.
Is that one, what positions are? That's a, that's a good turnout for that job.
Yeah, that's the breakdown.
Yes.
I'm not all over those applications you showed.
Your mind, that's what they thought our story. Business data analyst.
But we can't do.
Yeah, so that strategy innovation specifically. So we should be, so that's one position for some. That's one position. I just want to make sure.
That's how.
Yeah.
For public safety exams.
Yes, sir.
How, also somebody passes the exam. I've never really understood that process. So the, the exam is held whether or not the city is, city temple specifically is hired.
Hired or police.
Give me both.
They both are, they both have movement and so they both have a list. Texting, would you like to speak to how your process works for PD and what you're looking at with your list and types of opening?
Really, really my, my question to that is somebody passes it.
Yes.
And then doesn't, isn't hired. Do they then, can they then take that passing score somewhere else?
Yeah.
So and but, and that's then for the PD specifically.
Yes.
Or fire specifically, but they're not hired, then you can test next time we're hiring. Yep.
And the list lasts for a year, a month agreed on, otherwise for me, for, or, or until it is.
Meaning that, that passing score lasts for a year, meaning nine months later, if that person.
Well, the list is, is a list, it's, it's a ranked list. So you take, you, for entrance exams, you take the written portion, you take the physical portion. You add any additional points that you may be qualified for based on either civil service law or meeting confer. So military education, whatever you may qualify for. And so the highest score, taking all of those things into consideration, goes number one on the list. You have to have a minimum score to get on the list. But what, if you pass a minimum score, then you are ordered on the list. And you know, the simplest, in, in, there are some variations, but simplest is that the top scorer position opens, the top person gets that. So if there, if you're number six on the list and only throughout the year, there's only five openings, then you die on the list. And you start all over again. You gotta test again. You gotta take everything all the way through again. We get ordered, you could be higher on the list this time, you could be lower on the list because it depends on who tested that. Through our, our agreement with the police association, meeting confer agreement, we can have more than one list at a time, but you still go through, you, you know, if you've, say every three months, you developed a list. So that first list won't expire for another year, but maybe it only has six people on it, you know. So we go ahead and get the other list started. You don't go to the second list until you've exhausted the first list. But under general state law.
This is necessarily based upon, uh, it, it's based upon time. It's the oldest list.
Yes.
Is that right?
Right.
So even if somebody on the second list scored higher, you're still hiring off the first list.
Yes, it's by testing time. Yes.
This is only for Temple, not for any other surrounding thing.
It's just our list. It is a process that's followed by all civil service departments. So every other police and fire department in similarly sized cities, most of them are civil service. So they'll have a similar process because it's based in state law. But the list isn't a comprehensive list through, for other. You have to specifically come and want to test for Temple, take the test for Temple, pass the test for Temple. And school and, and again, in your class, if you will, you're on that list. And if you, if there's an opening, you hire. If not, and I, and I, you go through a background press, all of that. So there are reasons you wouldn't be hired, even though you're on the list. But that's what gets you into the next step of the process.
And someone who really wants to be an officer might be on this for several cities.
Right.
Whoever.
They're testing at several cities. All right, makes sense. Thank you. You bet.
And lateral, having the, having a separate lateral list is another thing that we, that we reached an agreement on with the Temple Police Association. That's helped us. I know, former, lots of former chief, but I'll, I'll talk to my chief.
Mr. Evans.
Yeah. He, I, I think maybe, I, you know, when I was over there the other day, there was four or five, I met four or five new lateral hires. So we've had a lot of success with that.
How does that work? If they're on the lateral list, is that above the non-lateral list?
We show preference on the lateral list.
Preferential hiring. If they, if we didn't have that agreement and somebody wanted to, to move laterally, they would have, they would have no other. And so if they were a, they could be, you know, an experienced, excellent officer. But if they're not a good test taker, then they could be pretty far down on the list. So it just gives them advantages to filling those positions with folks who will be ready to be officers faster. And of course, as y'all know, at the height of our vacancies, we were down thirty or so. And so we, we, if there was an arrow to be pulled out of the quiver, we pulled it. So working with the police association, we're able to get some flexibility on that testing. So having those multiple testing, those lists going was really beneficial. Because otherwise, you have to wait an entire year before you can start getting that list again. And it just, it just delays things. And so we, we've, that's, you know, obviously the compensation job, that a lot of what we've been, we've done together has made a big difference in that. But certainly that process was instrumental in, in getting us to close to full staffing again.
You're good. Anything else? All right.
So at this time, um, I'm going to adjourn the regular workshop and we're going to enter into executive session. It is currently three thirty-nine. And in executive session, we will receive a recent briefing from the city attorney regarding updates related to the pending or contemplated litigation, including but not limited to litigation related to the Santa Fe mobile home park. Uh, pursuant to Texas government code section five five one oh seven one. Counsel may meet in closed session to seek the advice of its attorney on pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer regarding a claim and will conduct a private consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney or the counsel under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar Texas clearly conflicts with Texas local government code. Chapter five five one, no final action will be taken. And item four is to receive and discuss a briefing regarding potential real property acquisitions or sales along Interstate thirty-five. Pursuant to Texas government code five five one point oh seven two. Counsel may meet and close session to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiation with a third person. And no final action will be taken. At this time, we'll adjourn the, uh, the workshop and reconvene, uh, no, we'll be that after we do executive session.
So we're now in executive session.